All set, all right. Okay, well, welcome to tonight's special board meeting here. If we could all stand and say pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank everyone for joining us on this gorgeous evening here. And we'll start off our meeting with administrative report and agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
Okay, the agenda was posted at Three Lakes Schools Sugar Camp School, the town of Sugar Camp, the town of Three Lakes, and the town of Monaco. And the media notified included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPRadio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that. And next amendments and approval of agenda, are there any?
No.
Okay, I'll seek a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Terry, second by Stacy. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unheard, motion passes five zero. Next we go to public comments, hearing comments from visitors regarding agenda items. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to agenda item tonight?
Glad you're having the meeting.
All right. Okay, very good. We'll move on to new business, starting with A, consider approval of contract with MSA for the school force, Highway A property.
Okay, I will start off and then I will invite Phil to join us and Justin if needed. This is the contract before you from MSA. They were asked, Phil was asked to have himself and his team go ahead and draw up a contract encompassing the site design and plan, the preliminary planning, what we need to get accomplished so we can be developing the land. And what you have in front of you tonight is the Three Lakes Schools district site design. And we're a little bit behind because we asked Phil to make a couple of more changes. I think he's getting real comfortable and used to me saying one more thing, so thank you, Phil, for your patience. But I think we've got our now. So we'll go through the contract and discuss what we are asking MSA to be responsible for us. And then the next steps will be the second part of this where we can kick off and get going. So looking at the contract ahead of you, Phil has prepared this for, the lump sum fee of the work is going to be $38,300. And looking at this contract, it is, as Justin has explained in our previous meetings, it's including all three tenants of the concerns that, and the areas that we want to work on, but really it's the development, the initial development of the land, the parking lot, the site for the pavilion, and for the placement of the trap range. We're also including, you know, where the trail would be laid out, but as it's been pointed out, a lot of this comes to us. This is the work that needs to be done so we can secure the proper permits, get the proper studies done, the specifications that we need to have going forward. And once we have all of that in place, because there's a lot of moving gears to that piece of machinery right there, then we can go ahead and get a little bit deeper into the next part. But this has to be accomplished, and with our late spring and short summer season, you know, our goal is to get as much done as we can, you know, so we're using it at least for the educational component by fall. So I think what we'll do is just go through the contract, and Mike, is that fine with you? Did you want to go through step by step?
Sure, I can.
Would you mind, Phil?
Did you want me to read each individual line, or did you just want me to kind of step through?
Well, let's take it by each section and kind of summarize, and then if there's special or specific questions, we can address them that way, if you don't mind. Okay, great.
Okay, so under general, basically, we're just talking about what area we're going to work in, we're going to work in SU 1138, the township of Sugar Camp, so we're defined where we're actually working, we're not doing anything else in the school district. Okay, site plans, utility plans, grading plans, stormwater plans, permitting, that wraps up everything that's going to happen. The first item is a boundary survey. With this project not having defined boundaries, it's, I feel it's important for us to define the boundaries before, we can do topography, which is site mapping, and we can do the parcel mapping together, so we can get that stuff in, get it into the computer, and we can start working with that data while the boundary survey is taking place, so that we can make sure that the boundary, we know exactly where the boundary is. If the corners are not in, if you look in my assumptions, like the second page, those would be additional services that would be required, because we don't, we don't know what we're going to find with a boundary survey until we actually start doing it. So the first thing is the boundary survey, second thing is topography, that gets us everything that we need so that we can start working inside the computer. Once we do that, we'll also get wetland delineation moving, our guys will come in and do a wetland delineation. I know you guys already talked to the DNR about a specific area on the property, but that isn't enough. We're developing about six acres on the parcel, there are some wetlands up in the north corner that show up in the databases that we look in, and with those wetlands popping up, that's going to, when we go to get DNR permits, that's going to raise a red flag. If we have the wetland delineation and we can say, the wetlands are here, here, and here, and we're not where we're working, or they are where we're working and we're going to mitigate those somehow along the way, it lays everything out so we know where things are. It's just one more step to get the DNR permit, and without it, you can't get there. So one thing that Mike asked before was to look in to groundwater wells, what's around the area for groundwater wells, so we're going to look at the well data that's in the DNR databases. It'll tell us depths, it'll tell us what strata they saw when they were drilling the well, you know, we can make some interpolations. It's more background information than it is our data that's going to say, you're going to go 202 feet and you're going to hit water. That's not where this is going to go, this will, what this will do is say, yep, there's, you know, 80 feet of overburden and underneath that, we're going to find sand grubs, whatever, I don't know what it's like out there. So we'll look into that. Stormwater infiltration is part of the site design, so when we do this site design, there will be water that'll run off, like the parking lot, the different areas, we have to control that water, we have to clean that water, we have to do things with it. So those things we will look at as far as infiltration. Another item in here that's down a little further, under the owner's requirements, is soil pits that have to be done, so that we have defined strata of what the soils are like out there. I know just from the background information that you guys have given me, the top is silty, you know, it's not very good for infiltration, but there, it may only be a foot or two thick, or it could be 40 feet thick, I don't know what we're going to find. But those soil pits will tell us what it's like out there. Those soil pits will also be used in conjunction to talk to septic people to figure out how big of a septic field that you're going to have to need out there, so if, when you put up the pavilion and you want to put in flush bathrooms, you're going to need a septic area of so big by so big. Or it doesn't work, or it, you know, it'll tell us a lot of things that's going to go on out there. It won't, maybe won't be where you're going to actually put the septic, but it's going to give us a good shot at what things look like out there, so that we can, okay, this is what we need to do, or, you know, we need to look at something over here, or we need to look at some other place for something, but it'll give us a good background. So we will provide a typical section for your walking trail base. Soils out there, if they're silty, you're probably going to need a thicker base than what you probably would like. One thing with the walking trail, you know, like when we, when we build bike trails, we're cognizant of, do we ever need to get an ambulance down these trails? You know, is it something that, when we build these walking trails, are you guys going to, is it something that you're going to want to think about, that you're going to need to get an ambulance down there? If it is, then that typical section becomes much wider and thicker, because now you have to get a vehicle in there. So is that something that you want, or is it something that you feel that you can live without? So those are the questions that we'll bring to you and say, what do you want? You know, it's your choice what you want, we'll give you a recommendation based off of what you tell us you want for use. So, you know, things like that, that you need to think about and figure out how you want to deal with. So we'll come back with a preliminary site plan, we'll show you guys the preliminary site plan, we'll have elevations on it, we'll have grades on it, we can talk about it, if there's something that you want to move, adjust, we can do that. Once we have approval of the preliminary site plan, we'll go back, make final site plan, and then that's when we'll do road control plans, and we'll start preparing for the DNR NOI permit, and that's when we'll prepare specs for this and get it ready to, I don't know if you guys will actually bid, or if you guys will work with contractors, but we'll have specs and ready to go, so let's say if you, you know, one possible way is that you bid this to a contractor, and the contractor has talked to maybe like two other contractors that are willing to work with him to do the work, but they want to do it as a partial donation. So, but you'd have one entity that you could go to if you have a problem, that you could say, well, this is the bid, and you're the general contractor, the school isn't the general contractor, you have someone that's in charge, like Pettington Wick, or somebody like that that says, we're going to come in, we're going to do this, and we're going to do it in a little bid, you know, because we want to, you know, do something great for Three Lakes. That's, it's one way to just have good control. So we'll prepare the stormwater details, stormwater management, the long-term maintenance, there will be a document that you'll sign that says, whatever we come up for our best management practice out there for stormwater, somebody will have to maintain, and that will be the school district will have to maintain. If it's infiltration swale or something like that, basically, you're saying that you'll go out there and you pick up the trash, and if it has standing water in it over so many hours, you'll go in there and remediate it, because it's not working anymore, it's silted in, or something's happened to it. So, once we submit the DNR NOI permit, someone from the school district will have to act as the owner, and there will be some fees involved that'll have to get paid. Those are not included from MSA, they would be something the school district would pay. We talked about owner's requirements, pretty much so far, the soil pits, they'll have to be, we can help you get someone out there that will provide these, but it would be a fee to come back to the school, approve the preliminary design like we talked about, approve the long-term maintenance agreement like we just talked about. Couple items that aren't included are historical, cultural, endangered species, those are items that are, you know, some entities want, they're not required. Construction staking is not part of this, if you want construction staking, if you want somebody to come out there and stake it, we can provide those services. All these services we can provide, they're just not in this contract. On-site construction observation, which would be, you know, someone out there on a full or part-time basis watching the contractor, making sure things are built to plan. If we need to have onsite meetings with the DNR, those would be additional. And then additional permits other than what we've talked about, and I don't see any of those permits, you already have a driveway permit, and I don't see that there'll be any other kind of permits, we're not close to water, there shouldn't be any other permits. Electrical designs are also not part of this, we can help coordinate with public service to get you service in there, but that would be something that would be, you know, you'd have to pay to get power brought in. And then somebody will have to design power drops to each one of the traps, because they have to have power brought to each trap so that you, you can run the machines. Couple of the assumptions, the client has clear title of the property, I'm assuming the school owns the property, driveway permit exists, we believe that to be there, county zoning allows for this type of development, I don't make sure Camp has any zoning. The surveyor will determine the coordinate system. Everything will be limited to SU 1138. The soils are suitable, if we get out there and we find out that, you know, we have to do something crazy for soil remediation, you know, something has to be done, that's, we're assuming that the soils are suitable. MSA will prepare permits and submit to DNR, the owner will pay for fees. GIS data will be available to assist with preliminary research and fieldwork. That means that the surveyor, when he goes to do the boundary survey, that the data from Oneida County is there and it's available to him, it shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any issues for that. And then we have to make assumptions for the survey, and we assume that all corners are in and have coordinate system information available. The following services may be required for complete survey, should these services be required, they'd be provided on a time and material basis. And that's if we have to reset the section to define where those section corners are. Some of them are, from what I've seen on the GIS system, some of them are there, there's one that I'm not sure on, so, but that's just what I can see on the GIS system, and I don't see what the surveyor sees. While we're out there, we won't be locating any individual trees, it's very time-consuming if our guys are trying to locate specific trees. If there's something out there, I don't remember any large majestic trees out there that you guys want to know exactly where they're at, we'll locate those, but we can't locate every tree on the property, because it'd take years. That's the project in a nutshell. We are getting kind of late in the season. My plan would be to have everything ready so that the contractor could get in there this fall, would the site be ready to use next spring? We're, if we would have signed the contract a month ago, I would say we really could have probably gotten there. Now I'm getting to the point where if we get a wet fall or something like that, and with the soils that are out there, I don't want to make any promises that it'll be ready to go next spring. I think that we can have the parking lot in and a lot of that good stuff in, but everything ready to use by spring could be a push right now. There may be things that have to be completed in spring, and it still could be possibly used, maybe just not the first couple of weeks of the season. We start early, I mean, when we're getting ready, we're blowing snow off of our fields, so, you know, there's, you don't have the ability to dig or do anything, you have to have all of those things in place this fall, you know, if they have to go out and run wiring and things like that, or set traps, those are all things that can be accomplished in springtime, even with snow on the ground. But if we can't get the earthwork done, things like that, that could get in our way. I think it can get there, I just don't want to set an expectation so high that, you know, we get to the end of fall and something didn't work. You know, I see this project, you know, going smoothly, I don't see any issues. Questions?
If at some future date, we decide that we might want to have a portable classroom or something out there, would that placement be covered in what you're doing here, more or less?
We're going to provide an area for pavilion with the, with the site design, and with the parking lot being as large as we have it right now, if you wanted to put in, are you talking like a trailer type?
Trailer type, yeah.
Yeah, that would be plenty.
Okay. What you need, you know, you'd need to put power to that, and it would, you know, it'd have to be hooked to a septic system, that sort of thing, too?
Yeah, well, you'd probably have separate bathrooms from that, I'm assuming, and, you know, I don't have a lot of experience with portable classrooms. But, you know, yeah, you bring a power drop over to it so that you've got lights and heat and things, but a bathroom, I'm thinking if you're going to put a bathroom out there, it's going to be either part of the pavilion, or maybe just a small building off of the pavilion. There's concrete buildings that can be brought in, they're, can be pre-assembled and basically put in place. If you've ever been to the boat launch on Boyce Drive in Rylander, there's a building that's, that's a concrete building, that's a restroom, it has the men's and the women's, it has a central core in the center where all the utilities are taken care of, it's flush, so everything is, you know, very nice, and they are very low maintenance buildings, because everything is concrete. The roof is concrete, everything is concrete, they're called off cut. And if you're going to do something that's like, you know, you could, you could put up a pavilion one year and then the next year, or vice versa, put up the bathroom and then the pavilion, it kind of separates the two and gives you the ability to kind of build as you kind of want, as you can afford, or, you know, maybe you want to do a big project where it's all hooked together, I don't know what you guys would want, but we would have an area that's set aside for the...
Thank you. What kind of timeline are you thinking, Phil, to finish this plan?
I have to get, so, once I have a contract, I can get on my surveyor's schedule, my surveyors are probably a month out right now, so we wouldn't be able to really do much design work probably until July. I'd like to design this in July, get back to you guys end of July, we do final design in August, we permit it in August and September, and you guys can build in probably October, November, which is, earthwork-wise is still very workable.
So to put this together, you're roughly three months?
Well, you lose a month because I got to get a schedule, so it's probably two and a half months to put it together, but because we're that much further into the construction season now, it's harder for me to get surveyor time, and it's, it's, I've got a project that he started working on up in Eagle River, holes come, and he can fill them with work, and if I get lucky and I get a hole in the middle of June, then I can, then it moves me ahead a week or two or three possibly, depending on when things go. But I need to get a contract so I can schedule, because right now I can't schedule until I have a contract.
You mentioned something too about wetland delineation and the trails. That wouldn't really impact a location of a trail at all, would it?
You may have to move the trail because there's a wetland there, but you wouldn't want to build the trail in the wetland anyway. You would just skirt the edge of it, you would have skirted the edge of it, you know, the green line that we have on our plan right now, it may go across the wetland right now, but you wouldn't have put it in the wetland, the wetland delineation will show us where they're at, and you'll stay out of there anyway, it won't affect anything.
Okay.
All it'll do is tell us where the wetlands are, so we stay out of there as far as excavation.
Okay. Any other questions at all? Okay, all right. I would accept a motion for approval on the contract. Is that your recommendation, Terry?
That is my recommendation.
Okay. Yes, Terry, a question for you, as far as these costs are concerned, is, is the school absorbing all of these, is the trap club contributing, is...
I think that we have to, as a school district, absorb this initial site placement cost. When we get into more specifics, like to the trap range, they have a lot of funds that are already planned and dedicated for that, but I don't think it would be, it would be, I don't know if fair is the right word, but it wouldn't be proper to put this on the trap club when we're looking at the whole comprehensive plan. And we're looking at this as the long-range development of the forest, so I do believe that is the appropriate way to go.
I would think that there could be a small portion of this, personally, because part of this design is the trap area. So I would maybe reconsider maybe a portion coming back from them towards this, but, you know, even if it's, you know, just, you know, even if it's...
Like the grading of the area, or are we talking about the, are we talking specifically the site plan this time right now?
I'm talking about this, yeah, this, the contract here, just in general, just to get, get everything going. So, I mean, like, even if it's just a, you know, a few thousand dollars maybe towards, but, I mean, it is part of this, so.
Yeah, that is a discussion in really in itself, as far as, you know, where do you stop as far as a district responsibility, and in, in this particular site, in that area where the trap club will, will be, where do they take over? And, you know, as far as the trap houses, I don't know if there will be anything in terms of that will actually be permanent to the land, or is this stuff all portable?
There are going to be sidewalks that will be put in that make up the trap field itself, there's arcs that, that go out, there are lines that are laid out in an arc that, that give you the different yardages that you shoot from. There'd be the concrete trap house itself, that will be put there. I mean, none of that stuff is permanent, permanent, I mean, an excavator, you know, two minutes, it's all gone, if you decide you don't want it in the future. The only thing it would be is it'd be a flat area.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's about the only thing that's, that's really there. As a trap coach, I would think that your team would, it would be, a good place to spend their money would be the trap houses themselves, the traps, and you're going to be looking at, you know, thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars to get those in. If you kind of, if you're going to ask them to pay for something, let them pay for something that's central to that trap field, because there'll be, there'll be, you know, quite a bit of dollars that go into that.
So sidewalk development, trap houses...
Correct. The parking lot and all those other things are multi-use.
Multi-use, yeah. What about electricity? Do we know what we need for this trap club equipment that they have?
I don't know until...
So what you, what you would do with this, if it was, let's say you were only going to develop this for the trap team, you'd bring in a service, and you could bring in the smallest possible service, because they only need, let's say, they wouldn't need more than probably 50 amps, you know, but as a full facility with, you know, pavilions and restrooms and potential wells and all the other things, you wouldn't bring in a much larger service then. You'd probably bring in a 200 amp service or something like that, so that you can service these other entities that, that are going to be out there, and that, that would make sense, so.
But for the immediate first use, I guess, for the trap club, they would most likely need electrical power?
They will have to have electricity.
They could run off generator if need be, couldn't they? I mean, in a pinch.
Well, you, you could buy battery-operated traps, where they could, they could run off 12 volt batteries, and they, they wouldn't have to have power onsite then. Mech makes traps that are, that are battery-operated that could be put in the trap house, and then it would need a different power supply down the line. I would do that instead of trying to run off a generator. Generator power, unless you buy a really nice generator, isn't super clean, and electric motors with high amp draw, because these draw, they only draw hard for a little bit, you know, or if you have, depending on which kinds of traps you buy, you could buy machines that are driven off of a hydraulic pump, so once they're running, they're running, so they don't really have a ton of draw. But they, they could be battery if it had to be. The most cost-effective thing is the run- could be battery if it had to be. The most cost-effective thing is to run electricity in there. You're gonna need electricity ultimately anyway. Just bring it in, put it on a pole, put a panel on a pole, and, and serve the trap houses. And then if you need to service the pavilion down the line, you've got it. If you wanna service a portable classroom, you've got plenty of power.
In the short term, if we're in a pinch and we don't have power, but everything else is ready to go, we have two battery-operated traps.
They haven't procured any equipment at this point, correct, for the trap houses?
So, we've got, we've got two throwers sitting in boxes down the hallway here.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah. And, and the two I'm talking about are already in service. I've seen them operated when they play games at the end of their round, and throw them from the sides, in addition to the one house that's out there. But those are battery-operated.
They are? Okay. All right. So, we could get started with that?
Yes.
And then the power could come in?
If we had everything ready to go and no power, we've got two
Right.
throwers that operate.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good, good question you brought up. We do indeed have the money to pay for the contract available in the budget?
Yes. But I don't know if you want to try to specifically delineate how much now would come from the trap club without representation here. That's a little bit difficult to...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we need to do that. I just think it needs to be mentioned that it's, I guess, at least an option, so that it can be discussed at a later point.
And I think, I think you're right there, Josh. And I think it, it's actually an expectation, because that has been a big core in driving this project, with the fundraising and, and the ultimate reasons that this was purchased, you know, with a bigger vision for, for all of the groups to be able to use it. But, that seems to be the group that had more money available and, and ready to get it going. And, you know, all these things are nice. We do not have to have flush toilets. We do not have to have a classroom, a portable classroom, or even a pavilion. What we need now is a parking lot to get our kids safely off the road. We need a place for them to be able to be in nature and having their lessons. We need a place, well, we don't need, but we would really desire having our trap range ready to go by spring if possible, because that has been the vision for a long time.
So, perhaps what we could look at is, is if we go ahead and approve this contract, the district could have everything prepped for the multi-use area of the trap club, and ask for a donation toward this part of the site work. But it would just be a request, I guess, you know, more than, more than a demand kind of a thing. And then moving forward, anything that would have to be developed from there, sidewalks, putting in the trap houses and that, I, I could definitely see that being the responsibility of the trap club. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So...
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract as stated, provided...
I'll second.
Okay, so, we have a motion on the table from Terry and seconded by Josh. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes five zero. And, thank you for putting this together for us, and whatever we can do to make up some time, I guess.
Yeah, I'll do what I can.
I'll ask the question like everybody else, you know?
Yeah, everybody wants to be first. I gotta do so much.
So, I think we got a good plan here, and it encompasses the entire site, and look forward to the next steps, and I guess we're gonna be talking about that next. So, all right. Well, let's move into that discussion. How's that? Let's discuss the potential next steps for development of the school forest, Highway A property. All right.
Okay, I will start, and then I'll ask Justin to take team a little bit. The, the honest truth is, if you go back and watch the videos of our last meetings, all of the next steps have really been discussed at length. I think we have a very good feel for where we're going. The most important piece is, of course, getting this part done with, with Phil, so that work can be done. And we talked extensively about the conceptual plan. We've talked about the curriculum and the enthusiasm of the teachers. Our goal is still that we have teachers and kids able to use the property in some capacity, and thanks to the placement of the porta potty, and people who are adventurous. We could be doing that on September 1st, and I think that's what we wanna keep in mind, too. The walking trail, we've talked about, we wanna make sure that's really tied very closely, you know, to our learning stations. That's kind of on us what we can do. The parking lot, we wanted to make sure that, that's set up so the buses can get in and out without any dangerous possibilities, blind spots of the road. We also talked, when Phil was here with us before, thank you, about the need to be able to get, for instance, a semi-in with a pallet of shot or other equipment. So, those are things that need to be considered. I'm still, I haven't talked to Scott, Mikeish, this last two weeks, actually, but he told me that they were just about ready with their policy development to share with us. I'm hoping to have my fingers on that within days, so I can get a good review of that and bring that to you also. So, that's partly the next steps that I'm really looking at. And I remind you that we don't have to have any guns, children setting foot on the property, anything that we're not comfortable with property policy, or with property liability insurance. We will make sure we're ready to go before we take that step, just like we would with any other situations that we have our kids involved in. Let's see what else. We brought up some discussion. There's the, the plan to get the naming process in place. I think that's really important, because you've gotta be able to name it if we're going to be doing the fundraising and starting these projects. I do wanna throw a caution out there. I think we've gotta be really sensitive to the naming of this property, because it's really fun and cool sometimes to do something kind of catchy or snappy. But, you've also gotta think about the historical, the people, the, the families, really the history. A lot of thought goes into a naming process. And that's why some districts have very specific policy about how names are arrived at. I think that for the general piece of the property, it's important that we keep kind of a, a general thought or approach to it. I'm not saying that down the road, I would like you to consider this, we might have some potential naming rights. For instance, if the trap field was something that we wanted to look at a naming right or in memoriam of, a pavilion could be a naming right, the ABC family, you know. But, that's something that has to have a lot of thought put into it, too, because you have a very active community group who is donating and supporting their blood, sweat, and tears, as well as dollars. So, I bring this up now, because I think we have to be very cognizant of that. We would not want to, in any way, hurt feelings or eliminate some people who would not feel comfortable putting their ideas forth. So, we've got this project going, but when we do bring names to you, it's going to take a pretty thoughtful and thorough discussion. Do you guys wanna comment on that right now, or? I put a lot of thinking into that. I just, having lived in a former district where it's a really big deal, I think some of us have come from that kind of experience.
So, your question is, as, as far as, you're talking about the name, naming rights, or
Right.
how we basically come together and, and put a name to this. There's been some work already in terms of generation of, from the roots, right?
Yes.
And where are we at with that?
He just checked, we're at thirty-four, he said?
Thirty-five.
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 Thirty-five different submissions. So, we, right now, they're just sitting there in a pool, and we have to narrow it down. I don't know if you would...
Well, the, the original thought was that the cabinet team would take a look at them all, and bring eight. We didn't set them all, like, if we're gonna bring three, or five, ten, or fifteen. But, narrow them down a little bit, and then bring them to this table, to a show thing.
I mean, do you just wanna come to us with a recommendation?
That would depend how comfortable you as a board are with us making a recommendation.
I would say maybe top five. Maybe, and then maybe have a, maybe an order of preference.
And maybe some reasoning why?
With some reasoning, it'd be spectacular.
We can do that.
It's my, my thought.
And I, I think that's a step one. Like I said, as we get further in, and I'm talking not even next spring, but maybe down the road, years down the road, perhaps we have an alumni or somebody who would like to make a big donation. Those are the kind of things that we have to be prepared for in the future.
Yeah, 'cause we don't really have any policy on that at all.
We do not. We do not.
So, that'd be something, not only for this, but also any of the school district property.
Correct.
But, yeah, there, there's probably more potential for something like that to happen on this property. And, so, that's something definitely to look at. Anybody else have any input on the process of naming this parcel?
Do you have a closing date for submissions?
I don't know if one's been put out there. We, we, we kind of have talked about having something ready to, have you guys talked about at the June regular meeting. So, I guess we could put one last blast out there. Submit your ideas by next date, right?
Yeah. Probably once school kinda comes to an end. Anyway, it's gonna start leaving everybody's brain.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I guess, is everybody comfortable with Josh's suggestion?
Yeah, I think that I'd put a lot of value in the, the people that would be researching this and judging this, and I personally would just have him put one forward, and we'll vote on it, yes or no. I'm not adverse to Josh's comments.
Okay.
I'm just saying, as an alternative, I have confidence, so, so do a good job.
Okay. All right. So...
But then I wouldn't have to vote on my own, so.
And really, I don't even have to see who suggested what. We just need the names.
So, in a nutshell, I mean, with Josh's suggestion, numerically, put him one to five, maybe the top one is gonna be your recommendation. So, I guess, we could go with that, or, anyway.
Pick another one that, that maybe you, was underneath that. But, if you could do that for the June meeting, that'd be, that would be great. And, I guess, just, what were some of the other things that you had questions for, Terry?
Well, I, like I said, I've just talked about the policy. I would really like, I mean, I, I know we understand, we have to have Phil do his part, but I would like to be able to get, you know, feet on the ground out there, and at least be looking at potentially where we think trails could be, and start thinking about where some of that grass and berry brush picker clearing could happen. And, and there's a lot that's just gonna take, you know, elbow grease and manpower to get started, just to be out there and get a good feel for it. I think then we also, I would like to speak with Al Vodis and the trap club, going back a little bit to the, the funds and the money, what kind of money is available for the different phases, get some more specific information on what the, the trap houses need, what they are looking for. I mean, I'm the absolute wrong person to develop a trap program when the experts are in the house who can be saying to us, this is what we need to do. So, I can be that, that informational piece, working with Justin, but he doesn't have time to do all of this. I can do some of this, this legwork. We talked about last time, you know, who would be the point person, and I said, well, it's going to be a, a joint effort. I really think it has to be working with Justin, myself, and with our new business person that's coming in, who are the, we're going to be the three. But, you know, I can be the main contact as far as information back and forth with you, but, and Justin's been great doing all of the, the work on the phone and the communication and stuff. But, we're just gonna really have to take team, because if you haven't noticed, everybody, you're starting to figure out, this is a tremendously big project.
Yeah.
And it's not the only thing going on in the district. And, so, at moments, I, I don't wanna say overwhelmed, but it's like, wow, this is a lot. So, we want to do it right, and that's why we're taking the appropriate time. And I feel the pressure of the timeline, but in the whole scheme of things, you know, maybe we'll get a couple of breaks, and there'll be a hole in the schedule, and things will come together. But this is where we need to be at. I think also, we can start looking at what a potential pavilion could look like. That does not mean it has to be ready to be built in October, or November, or in the spring, but we can start talking about site design. From that to a, even a portable classroom, what are the costs? We looked at that for the 4K in talking with Terry. They're very reasonable. That might be something in the future that we see, you know, it's not our ultimate goal, but it might do a purpose. I'd like to bring information to you that this might be a temporary fix, or we can always buy and then sell and get our money back out of it, if we determine that's where we need to go, rather than building a more permanent structure. It's going to depend on availability of manpower, supplies, cost. We have a lot of wonderful people want, willing to donate, but we also have to coordinate and get things built. I mean, there's gonna be a big process to that, too. So, I think the prioritization of getting what has to be done first, being the parking lot, getting, you know, a trail access of some kind, even a rudimentary trail, so we can have some of our curriculum learning stations set up. They didn't need a bunch when they did the rough growth study, but, you know, with littler kids or things going on, I'd like to have a few of those sites already established to do some of the curriculum.
I guess, as far as the trails go, is that something we could just punch in without equipment? Or, are we, I mean, ultimately, we talked about delineation of wetlands and need for avoiding those, and it sounds, and one, one part of me is like, all right, we have to wait for the delineation before we can establish trails?
You could, you could start going out there, establishing trails. The only thing that you gotta think about, though, is if you wanna establish trails without, at least like a skid steer, you're gonna have stumps, you're gonna have rough terrain. They don't know if you wanna make these even pseudo ADA accessible, but you should probably be thinking about accessibility.
Right.
You know, if you wanna make something accessible, you're gonna have to take off the stumps and take out the brush, and you're gonna have to bring in some sort of base material to build off of, so that you've got something to, for people to walk on, or, or, you know, push a, a, you know, wheelchair or something to head on. So, the idea that you're just gonna scoot or cut brush, I don't think is probably the right way to think about it. I think the right way to think about it is, is you can go out there and cut brush, you can say, this is where we wanna go, and we wanna meander, and, you know, oh, we'd like to go around this tree, and we'd like to go back around here, and we'd like to go up there and make a little loop around, you know, up in the corner of the property, and, you know, the neighbor said we can go to the north, so we scooch off onto the north a little bit, you know, cross up here, we got a little wetland here, we can look at, there's water that stands here in the spring, we can, you know, ephemeral ponds and things like that. All of that kind of work can happen, but it's not gonna be a true trail. No, it could be a trail enough for, you know, older kids, but I wouldn't wanna take anybody under like third grade out there, you know, and try to, you know, walk around, or you've just cut brush and, and cut the blackberry brush back.
I would think that's kinda what you're more talking about, I think, you know, more, more of a rudimentary, but, you know, you're, just like walking through the woods, you, you pick your best path, and, you know, take some marking tape out there, and mark trees up to the next point, and kinda make, make your way as you go, at least for a start.
Yeah, just a quick start.
Yeah, so, the, the plan we have, kind of informally ready to go when we hit the green light, have at it, or get some time to have at it. We've got a small crew of folks who are ready to go out and tape our spots to, to coordinate with the learning stations that Mr. Grossman has been so kind to help us locate. So, there's three or four neighbors that are just waiting. I got a text from one today, when we're ready to go, let's go do it, let's juice up and bug dope and make it happen. But, then I've got a smaller army of, I shouldn't say smaller, a little bit larger army of folks ready to go on, people who have come forth and said, hey, let, let's get out there and start clearing brush for me to clear brush. And, and there's a lot of tiers to this, like, Phil brought up a good point. Um, and then, and there's a lot of tiers to this, like Phil brought up a good point, uh, yes, we're gonna wanna have access and, and yes, we wanna make it as ADA as possible, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Right.
Okay? Um, I feel like, at, at least in my head, the initial plan is, let's make it four-wheeler ATV accessible, 'cause I, I, I think, I got a guy back here that could verify, I think our search and rescue, uh, or, or paramedics do have access with four-wheel vehicles, right? Like, so...
Sure Camp Fire, Sure Camp Fire does, too.
Yeah, someday maybe an ambulance, you know, and, 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 but we, we should, we have to prepare for the worst-case scenario, right? If some, something happens in the farthest back corner, we wanna be able to get a vehicle there. So we're not talking about just a walking path here, we're talking about something that a, a four-wheeler could, or, or ATV could ultimately traverse at some point. Um, and yes, that will take some, some equipment, that's gonna take a bobcat going through there. I know a guy that has been, most mornings he stops by at the school and says, can I get the bobcat going yet? Can I get the bobcat going yet? No. You guys tell me mostly know who I'm talking about. No, just relax, we'll, we'll get it. But, so, so I, I think we're gonna have plenty of help once we get to that point, just a matter of getting flagged and getting out there and feeding the bugs to make it happen.
So you're thinking of just putting in this rough path to begin with, Justin?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, and, and then progress to some, maybe a base material if needed so that you can make it wheelchair accessible. Um, that's, that's down the line, I think.
Yeah.
But, uh, there, there's gonna be some meandering, like, like Josh, I think you said, you know, we're gonna sit there and look as we flag it out, well, probably not a good idea to go there, there's a bunch of big trees, we're gonna go around, you know, um, that's kind of the wood, but, but John has already taped, John Grossman has taken us on a couple of spins around the property and it's, it's pretty, I get a pretty good idea of where, where we need to go, uh, but we're certainly gonna involve John if he's willing and able to come out there again to put the tape down so we can, and there are a lot of kids who are saying, I need community service hours, graduated a couple of years, I need community service hours, so.
Okay.
I've been, I've been instructing the kids to keep their nose on their email, 'cause I'll put out a blast and say, all right, he is out there at some, since a time, let's go, so.
Okay. All right, so...
Kids are good brush cleaners, is what I'm saying.
You got what?
Kids are really good brush cleaners.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got, uh, I guess, a group that's ready to roll in terms of starting to punch a trail out and, uh, and then eventually that will work into something perhaps a little more permanent, uh, that would be ADA accessible, which I think is definitely important.
Yes.
To make sure that all students have access and, uh, so, but this is a start and we need to start.
Side note, I did put a verbal request in with our, um, tech ed department to, to put on the project list for early next year to, to get some picnic tables going for, for inside or outside of a pavilion. We can never have too many picnic tables out there.
That's great, yeah.
And they need projects, so.
Yeah.
Um, do we need a site manager, uh, when this project actually is, you know, when we get equipment out there to prep the, the trap area, the parking lot, pavilion?
You're gonna want one point person to deal with. You're only gonna want one person from the school district, whether it be Terry or Justin, so that everything goes on through that one person, 'cause there are gonna be questions, there're gonna be things that are gonna come up, there's gonna be questions, so, yes, you're gonna want someone that is, has got the authority to say, yep, we're gonna pivot, we're gonna go through this.
And any idea on what kinda time that's gonna take someone, you know, 'cause I'm thinking of Terry and Justin and how much they already do?
It'll vary.
Depends on, depends on the contractor you get.
Yeah.
Totally, yeah.
It, it needs a hundred percent correct, it's, it's gonna, you know, be a, a big, big deal on who you get out there. Um, but you still, even if, even with a great contractor, you're gonna want one person that that contractor goes back to from the school district that says, okay, what do you wanna do here?
Okay.
So, you're gonna want, you know, I guess if it's two people, it'd be okay also, but, you know, unless they're gonna keep in constant communication, the contractor will sometimes play a little bit off of one versus the other, so it's really best that you just have one person and, you know, let's say it's Terry and, you know, she has a question, he goes back to Justin or something, but somebody that's available.
Well, I don't, I don't know, that's a terrible amount of time to take out of Terry's budget and Justin's. I mean, maybe we ought to be looking for, get somebody else within our galaxy that may take that on or be the appropriate person. You two guys are valuable.
Thank you.
Could be a board member, it could be, you know, someone else, you know, someone else that you, you trust to make decisions, but if they, they have to be able to make a decision, they can't, they can't have to come back to the school board.
Right, right.
That only meets once a month when they need a decision.
Not at that point, yeah, 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 yeah. You know, you guys have talked this over, I guess, already, um, what, what are your feeling? I mean, you, I've heard that you were willing to do this, but is that something that you...
My thought is, if we're being practical and logical, Justin's gonna be the boots-on-the-ground guy who's going to know where that trail's going to curve, et cetera, but Justin's not gonna sign the checks. I think when we're talking about the money piece, it has to come to me and I can, I can guarantee you, Justin and I talk every day, that would not be a problem with a time commitment. Um, I don't mean to speak for you, Justin, but I would hate for you to be the one out there and say, okay, now we gotta get Terry out here and I'm gonna go, well, Justin, what do you think? Because you're the guy standing with the chainsaw and you know the curriculum plans, you know? Um, me personally, I think we can make it work if we approach it that way, with him as the, the manager. I am not saying that it can remain this way and I'm not saying that we won't need to have, as we talked about early on, a school forest coordinator position of some kind in the future, because depending how fast this grows with even scheduling and facility use and, and all that, again, down the road, but sometimes, once you get those seeds planted, it gets really going, so we will be talking about it again, I'm quite sure.
Okay, all right. There's no doubt it's gonna take time and commitment and, uh, and that's something that, you know, we can talk about, too, as, as a board in terms of how do we, how do we cover you guys for that, so I think that's important, 'cause we got the higher someone to take care of this and, and I like the connection, I mean, you guys work together and you know what, what, what we want out there as well as you do and, uh, so I, it, I think it's a great team, I just wanna make sure that you're not gonna be over...
Two years down the road, we don't wanna say, well, what about that, Terry? Wow, I didn't have time to do that.
Well, yeah.
You're right.
So, um, all right, so at this point here, we do have, uh, some information here to, 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 to talk about, I, I'm sorry, that, that we've answered questions on, um, do we have any other questions that anyone else has for next steps on moving forward? I guess we'll have to talk about, uh, electrical design when that comes into place and such.
I would think that you're gonna have to come up with somebody, there's enough electricians around, I would look at that, you, somebody will step forward.
So...
You know, it's not like you need a very, you basically need a power drop.
Yep, so we got a rough idea, the trap needs some type of power.
Is WPS still doing a hundred and twenty-five feet first?
I think so.
Okay, I thought they were, but I didn't, I thought you might know better.
You'll be beyond that, but, you know, I would, I would probably just set a hole and, and put a box on it and it'll be...
Yeah, yeah.
You know, centrally located, it's, you have to run something someplace else and while we're digging in there, if you're gonna go and, you know, you can have the contractor throw a couple of conduits in the ground.
Right.
It's really easy when it's all dug up.
Mm-hmm. And the driveway that's punched in there, obviously, was just to get us access, get people off the highway so we can start looking at developing and then such like that, um, you know, is that, um, the, I, I think there was just a, I don't know, the temporary culvert that was put in?
Yeah, it's just a plastic culvert.
So...
That was the job.
So, okay, um, and then, as far as the fundraising, when do you think we would start that and who would have that?
Well, I know that Colette's interested. Um, I do think we need to, again, talk about it at our next meeting, get the naming portion in place and then probably generate ideas, what kind of fundraising do we want to do? Um, we have to be careful, too, because we're always tapping the same groups and we don't wanna take away from certain projects, you know, to, to fund another project. So I think that we're gonna have to do a little bit of preliminary work, finding out who the local groups are that might wanna help us. For instance, I remember the Lions Club was mentioned, I'm sure there's other groups that, you know, might want to be involved in this, but that's gonna take a little bit of research and, and asking and I would welcome anybody who has suggestions to bring that as well, too, to us.
And if we can find someone with some artistic talent to actually do a rendering or a sketch or something like that, put, so people can see some kind of a vision, um, and...
A picture's always worth a few thousand words.
It does help, yeah.
That's true.
Okay, all right. Okay, anything else that we need to answer questions to, or do we have any questions that we have going forward here in the development?
I, I need to talk to you guys about something else, but could we do that now or do we have to add, end a meeting and then...
It's not on the agenda?
Because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, I'll, I'll wait. So, all right, is everybody else, Stacy, you're covered?
Good.
Josh, you're covered?
Good.
Yeah, Cheryl, Terry. All right, very good. Did we miss anything, Phil?
Nope.
Justin? No?
No, my radar.
Okay, Terry?
I think we're okay right now.
Okay, awesome. Okay, um, all right, well, thank you for everyone's input here and...
Thanks, Phil.
Phil, thank you.
Phil.
I make a motion to...
Take a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Adjourn.
Second.
All, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None heard? Motion.